Yeah. I saw that big bag of candy left over from the fair. It's in my-
Did you each have one?
Oh, it's okay. I was wondering where that came from.
Go ahead.
I'm gonna have to hide that.
He brought those yesterday.
That'll last me ten years. That was a success, the fair was.
Absolutely.
Really fun.
Yep. Okay, I'm reporting on financials I approved on April 25th. Resolution 18061 included a transfer from the Commissioners to the ADP for their contract services and equipment accounts in order to clear up old 2017 projects for Synapse phone paging and JFS network switch reimbursement, and also a transfer from the Engineers' Office to their weight enforcement OPRAS account to cover current payroll needs. And then there was a cash transfer that was part of this financial I also approved from the Commissioners, the Computer and Equipment Improvements Fund in order to fund and complete some outstanding projects, including the Court Video Project and the Black Box Cisco Cube Project.
So we've got minutes for the 17th motion to approve-
Second.
Question, Claypool?
Yes.
Question, Ryan?
Yes.
And then also, we have a motion for the April 20th minutes.
Second.
Question, Claypool?
Yes.
That one and that one. Okay.
He went to go make a phone call to check on something that-
On the financials.
Oh, on the financials.
On the financials, so if you want-
Well, I can just, I have the stuff I approved, that's next thing.
Yep.
Go over that. So on April 26th, on your behalf, through what you authorized me to do, I, for Water Resources, I accepted the Resignation of Common Pleas, Special Projects Manager, number 2399, excuse me a second, number 2399 to be effective April 20th, 2018. Also approved with a liquor license, concurred with Newbury Township Trustees, and not requesting hearings on the liquor licenses requested by U.S. Hotel OSP Ventures LLC, DBA Punderson State Lodge, patios, pool area, cabin sports chalet, permit number CTRFO-9133707-0050, and DBA Punderson State Park Golf Course Deck, permit number CTRFO-9133707-0045, located at 11755 Kinsman Road, Newbury. So what's happening there is Canteen Corporation had operated these areas, and I guess they've been changed to U.S. Hotel.
Yeah, Zantara lost that.
Or Zantara was, it was Canteen before that.
Yeah, Zantara lost that, probably lost the bid for this round, and it's-
Right. Originally it was Canteen, and then it was Zantara, and now it's U.S. Hotel. And then on April 30th, for the county home, I approved hiring Emily Norris to the position of full-time attendant, number 1504, to be effective May 3rd, 2018, at the rate of 1181 per hour or one year probationary period. This offer of employment is contingent upon the successful completion of required pre-employment conditions. Also approved the hiring of Edith Hale to the position of part-time attendant, number 1504-1, to be effective May 3rd, 2018, at a rate of 1181 per hour or one year probationary period. This offer of employment is contingent upon successful completion of required pre-employment conditions.
Okay.
Now the financials.
So can we move forward with the engineer, or did we need something on financials for that?
Nope.
Nope? Okay. Sounds good.
Morning.
Morning, Nick.
Item six on the agenda is just executing the uniprice contract for the awarded project that we already had done for asphalt resurfacing of Auburn Road, Section P and Thwing Road, Section C, the Sugarin Valley paving. So it was already awarded, this is just signing the contract.
Okay. Yeah, we could do them together, that's fine.
Okay. And then seven is to execute the contract for the asphalt resurfacing of Jug Street, Mangrove Road, and Tumford Township, also the Sugarin Valley paving. And eight is to execute the uniprice contract for the annual polyester pavement markings of various roads, county roads, to Ogle's Beach Construction.
So did that change, usually on the pavement markings, it's a-
Usually about every two to three years it switches from Arrowmark back to Ogle's Beach, to Arrowmark back to last, it's been the last two years it was Arrowmark, and then before that it was Ogle's Beach, they kinda go back and forth.
So then they bid on those, then as far as the whole price on that job?
On the, it's a bid-out project.
Okay.
So it's an annual, once we had somebody else, a third contractor, but it's usually those two that do most of the work, so.
Okay.
They tried once, air-
Yeah, and it's usually just between the two.
Yeah.
The County Engineers' Office is requesting the board approve next week the uniprice contract for Sugarin Valley paving for the asphalt resurfacing of Auburn Road, CH4, Section P, and Thwing Road, CH27, Section C, and Sharge, and other townships in the amount of $443,170. The County Engineers' Office is requesting the board approve next week the uniprice contract for Sugarin Valley paving for the asphalt resurfacing of Jug Street, CH46, Sections A through B, and Grove Road, CH46, Section D, in Troy Township, in the amount of $460,114.96. The County Engineers' Office is requesting the board approve next week the uniprice contract with Ogle's Beach Construction Company for the application of polyester pavement markings of various county roads for the year 2018 in the amount of $167,864.75.
Second.
Question, Claypool? Question, Ryan?
Yes.
All righty.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Okay, Department on AG.
Morning, Jessica. Good morning, how are you?
Good, good, good.
Okay. What we're asking for today is one of our part-time employees, Magali Rios, we're hoping for the summer we can have her work full-time in Louisville, thus participating in the summer health program.
So Department on AG is requesting the board approve the increase of hours for Magli Rios, part-time assistant site coordinator, up to 40 hours per week for the period of May 21st, 2018, through August 17th, 2018.
Second. Yes.
Thank you.
You wanna give a little bit of gift for financials?
Sure. Just give me one.
Stand by. We're the holding pattern.
All righty, Mr. Adrian.
Okay. Today's financials includes an appropriations transfer from the General Fund to the Sheriff's Office for expenses related to an oil spill that were returned in part to the county via Corsa insurance claim, a cash transfer from the Auditor's Office to the Unemployment Compensation Fund for March unemployment, then and now from the Dog Warden to JFS for employee background checks performed in January of 2018, a travel request from Water Resources to attend the Ohio Water Environment Association Collection System Specialty Workshop in Lewis Center, Ohio, May 16th to 17th. Vouchers include $337,063 from the Commissioners' Office to Corsa for the 2018-2019 insurance renewal, $43,116.25 from JFS to Great Lakes Trucking Driving School for CDL job training expenses, $17,018.40 from JFS to the Board of DD for March Help Me Grow expenses, and $11,111 from the Sheriff's Office to the Ohio Bureau of Criminal Identification and Investigation for background checks for concealed carry licenses. And finally, a revenue certification from the ADP Board for additional funds received in their Computer Equipment Improvements transfers and revenue account. And also Commissioner Claypool had a question about an expense from the Common Pleas Court for some Office Pro and Standard licenses. Wanted to make sure that they've gotten three quotes. I have those three quotes here, so if you want me to review the prices from all three of them, I can.
I'd like to, let me see real quick.
Sure.
I'm still amazed at that price, 'cause you can go online, it appears, and get cheaper prices than this.
I'm not sure.
There's so many different flavors of this, you gotta make sure you're comparing apples and apples, that's something.
And too, I think sometimes you pay more as well if you're upgrading or something from an older, you know, an older version rather than the previous version, so like you said, there's a lot of variables that go into it.
Yeah, just look thoughtful, I mean, I'm gonna, make me a copy of these if you could, and I'll-
Oh, absolutely.
So the gist of that is, is we have a total number of how many licenses?
It was 41, so 35 Standard and six Pro, Pro Plus actually, is what this says.
And those are how much?
The Microsoft Office 2016 Pro Plus licenses, they purchased six of those. They were $350.38 each. The Microsoft Office 2016 Standard licenses, they got 35 of those, and those were $257.48 each.
You know, part of the question that I have, and I, excuse me for, I don't wanna beat this dog too hard, I'm gonna go into a little bit more.
Sure.
But oftentimes, we buy the full set of licenses, and we use Word.
Right.
You know, you buy 15, 'cause you buy the Pro package, Elite package, whatever, and it has all these very cool-
Has access and all, no, very few people use access.
And so we're paying additional for all of this capability we don't really use. I mean, if you look at what our users are actually using, day in and day out, Word, PowerPoint, Excel, whatever.
And these are for the entire county, or?
No, no, this is just for the court.
Courts, okay.
And so, you know, that's some of the questions that I have, are we paying more than we need to?
I'm not sure what's in the Standard version, is that?
I mean, 'cause mine, mine, mine's like a hundred bucks, or something, a hundred bucks a year, is what mine is. Oh yeah, if you have Office 365, I think, that's like a subscription, and you keep paying that. Or this is a license that you actually own the stuff.
Okay, okay. Okay, that's different.
It's a one-time until the next time Microsoft upgrades, and now you're obsolete, you gotta pay for the upgrades.
And the Office 365, I think that's kinda like, almost like an online application.
Yeah, maybe cloud-based, and that's, you know, could be a- Well, it's not cloud-based, I do five licenses for a hundred bucks.
Okay.
So a year, a hundred dollars a year, it's a subscription thing.
Right.
And you get five licenses.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, five into 100, you know.
Or you could use Open Office, and it's free.
So, I don't know, I mean, I think that there's, there's some questions to be asked, and may all be completely appropriate, I mean, I don't know, it just caught my eye, so. One other, go ahead.
So the total number, so the total number for that bid was how much?
Most of these were in the $10,000 range, so.
$10,081.97, that was the?
What the, yeah, there's two things though that are in there, so some of these, the quotes, uh, so this one-
So this would cover municipal court, or the Common Pleas?
Court, yes.
Court, and also like the probate court, all the courts, pretty much.
I'm not sure how many, I'm not sure which of the courts are all included that, in that, the voucher came from Common Pleas.
Okay.
The CDWG quote for a total was $19,647.10. The quote from MNJ was for $18,497.50. And this one from SCW, although, you know, this looks right, $11,114.08.
Well, that's a big difference, huh?
Big difference.
Okay, well. No, thank you.
That sounds like a lot, I remember when Lotus 123 came out, it was like 500 bucks just for the spreadsheet program. So even software's actually come down.
Actually, the CDWG and MNJ, actually that was, they had quoted 65 of the Standard licenses, whereas the SCW was only 35, but the, still the unit price was lower.
Well, that is a-
That's why there's a big difference of prices.
That is, is a license, it's not a subscription, so it's a license.
Correct.
A little different, until the next, you know, it's 2016, we're buying an old license, so.
It's a very good point you, very good point you made.
But it's in 2018 now, we bought a 2016 license, which is an experience.
That sounds about right.
Very good point you make about having the professional version, and so few people use the features on the professional.
It was only six of the Pro and 35 of the Standards.
Um, one, one quick question, I noticed the Revenue Certification ADP Board-
Yes.
In the amount of $59,033.60. Now, that, what was that, it doesn't have much detail there, but you know anything about that, or?
That was the, for the cash transfer that they-
Well, we can't, we transfer cash into a different fund. In order for them to be able to spend that money, it has to be certified, the revenue has to be certified, so that's a step. Where the documentation provided ultimately, the Budget Commission meets just informally to certify any new sources of revenue that weren't in the original-
So this is related to those past due bills?
Yes.
Right, the old projects that they're trying to clear up.
Okay, there was three of them?
There were three of them, yes.
Okay, okay. Okay.
And so they're creating the unappropriated balance so that they can then encumber-
So then next week it'll come, we'll see it where, I mean, so it was-
There'll be supplemental appropriation.
Well, it'll have to go through the Budget Commission first, I'm not sure when the next Budget Commission meeting is. Once they approve it, then it'll appear, then you'll see the supplemental appropriation, then an encumbrance, and then a payment.
Okay, okay.
So to spend money is some-
So it's several weeks.
No, that's good, I just, I, you know, that one just kinda caught my eye, I hadn't seen that before.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions, Dave, or that you had, or you're good?
Yep.
Okay.
Looks good.
So the Commissioners' Office is requesting the board approve next week Resolution 1862, itemizing the financials for the May 1st, 2018.
Second.
Question, Claypool?
Yes.
Question, Ryan?
Yes.
Thanks, Adrian.
You're welcome.
Yes, good morning, everyone.
Morning, morning.
How are you?
Good morning.
So, trying to keep this as easily, as simple as possible, just to give a little bit of background. So JFS has always, always had a slightly different employee manual than the Commissioners' Office, just because we're a different operation. For example, we would have a provision in there for something called COPE, which is care of, of people in emergencies, because we're a 24/7 operation, so we need to have a policy for that. So it's always been slightly different. When the Commissioners' Office, at the end of 2016, updated your policy, we undertook a committee in-house to look at your policy and compare it against our policy page by page, to adopt as much of your new policy as we could. And so, we kept certain provisions that were unique to us, made about 85 to 90% of changes to get in accordance with the Commissioners' policy. And the one page that document that I sent you guys is where we couldn't adopt those changes, just 'cause we're still different. For example, if you saw in there, we use TimeForce, the Commissioners doesn't use TimeForce. So that, what we're asking, coming up and asking is for you guys to adopt and accept our recommendation so we can adopt the new policy, which was really, the undertaking was try to get as close to yours as possible. And so I just wanted you to see where we're, where we still differ. And so, we just wanted to, we spent about a year, and if not, trying to, I mean, it's a 200-page, or hundreds of them, a page document. Literally went line by line to get as close to where you guys were at.
Appreciate that. The only thing that I didn't understand was that 15 minutes, like the increments of 15, what do you mean by that?
It just allows people, and it used to be that they had to take increments of 30 minutes. So if somebody wants to take 45 minutes off, because of TimeForce, it's not labor-intensive for us, so it's okay for them to put in for a 45-minute piece of vacation.
'Cause TimeForce, uh, TimeForce tracks it 15 minutes.
It used to be before they had to do 30 minutes.
But, so give me an example, so if somebody, so somebody say they got a doctor's appointment at 2:00, and they get off at 3:00, you're saying they could leave it?
They could put in-
Order to 2:00, and then?
No, well, let's, let's put it at the end of the day, they normally leave at 4:30.
Okay.
And they have a 4:30 appointment, but they need 45 minutes to get there.
Okay.
They could put in from 3:45 to 4:30.
I see.
Before, they would have to put in from 3:30 to 4:30. So if you get 15 more minutes of work, they only are charged their vacation or sick leave for whatever they're actually using.
Okay, okay. And then do you, do you guys restrict like a certain amount of use? Like, do you have where somebody's, like as far as that vacation time, you know, like how do you do that with their vacation time? Do you have it where they could just take a half a day off, all the, like, they had two weeks of vacation time, they could take literally, you know, half a day for four weeks, or something? I mean, do you guys have that, or do you try to manage that a little bit more to say, if you're gonna take time, take it in, in, you know, number of days? Or do you, are you fairly flexible, or?
We're flexible within the teams, because we have supervisors that might supervise five or six people.
Yeah.
As long as they have coverage, they're flexible with what they approve.
And then with your software though, so you've got a total number, like, let's say it's 20 days, total time of, to multiple, you guys are probably based on hours, right? So then the, the unit, when it goes in, and it's, it's addressed as vacation time, and it comes off that, that total then?
Yeah. What we accumulate the same way as any other county.
Yeah, two hour, hour cap.
Okay, all right.
And TimeForce tracks all of that, but it just, as a tool, it allows us to do things in 15-minute increments.
Okay. How long have you been using TimeForce now?
Three and a half years.
Yeah.
Like, like, right when I started.
Right, and what would you say your, how would you grade that?
A plus.
Yes.
It's amazing, it's amazing.
Yeah, we need to-
The way we can run reports.
We need to really seriously, you know, look at that again.
I mean, we use it as a tool, if I ask Paul Tate, can you run me a report to see how much va, how much vacation, or especially sick time, I really, we really try to monitor sick time, how much sick time's being used in the Income Maintenance Division?
Right.
You know, 'cause-
We can drill it down.
We can drill it down to, and run a report, and then run it even by supervisor, and see if it's a supervisor, I mean, we can use it as analytics.
What's cool about, you can put in, you know, you can, as an employee, you can put in a request to your supervisor, and it pops up in their system, and once they've approved it, now they can, the supervisor can pull up the calendar and see, you know, before they go out to leave, they can look and see, okay, gotta make sure that, you know, 'cause usually you're not, yeah, you can have time off, you can have-
Right, and then you forget.
You forget, and pretty soon you've let the whole, you know, no, why is no one here? Well, you let them all off, you didn't know.
Or if you have it, if people tend to always get sick on a Monday or Friday.
Yeah.
You can track that.
You can see that, yeah. You know, we were very close to pulling the trigger on this, and, you know, due to circumstances out of our control, I think, you know, that kinda got shut off. But we should really circle back and try and get that thing on the rail.
And that'd be a good, I think we need to have a conversation with the auditor, because I think this is a lot more capable in the system, they've started implementing. The park just went, is going on with TimeForce, I don't know if they're up yet.
No. I mean, it makes sense to have one standardized type thing, I mean, I understand if, you know, that was always the rub, there was, you know, everyone wanted to do it their way.
Yeah.
And, you know, it makes sense to have one agreement, you know, that way the county's standardized.
And it's not terribly expensive either, it's really, really reasonable.
Yeah, compared to the others.
One of the huge benefits for us is at the end of the pay period, that we can download the payroll into an Excel spreadsheet that meets the criteria that the auditors need, and we email it to them, then they can upload it right into New World.
Yeah, we're not doing any manual- Yeah, I mean, they get a manually massaged spreadsheet from us, our department, you know, that-
Right.
And it goes in, I mean, for the auditor's standpoint, it looks the same as what they are able to do in a matter of minutes with 90 employees.
Right, yeah.
So we save a lot of time.
Huge time saver.
Yep.
And accurate, too. Jerry, Water Resources, we're, you guys weren't using over there, TimeForce?
No.
No?
We were looking into it, and we were gonna tag along if the Commissioners went there. What we're looking at though is, we're not, we're not looking, we weren't looking at a time card program, we're looking more for their timesheet side, to be able to track our time and the costs and all that, so we could, yeah.
And that, and that has the capability.
That has that capability.
It also has the capability to sign in on job sites, like with the geofencing and all that.
That's my understanding.
Yeah.
The nice thing about TimeForce is that it has adaptable, 'cause we've got various departments, JFS is way different, not a department, but is way different from our Water Department. And so, having a system that has that adaptability is really important, and it looked like TimeForce has that.
Yeah.
And we've demoed it several times.
No, I do think we ought to bring back to the, back to the surface now that the dust is settling over at the Auditor's Office, and try to get this back on our radar.
Maybe, I don't know, Dave and Jerry, if you wanna, you know, talk, you know, make that introduction again, and it's proven the things that can run.
We can try to get Chuck to come down and see the demo, that'd be great.
We've already had, just on other issues, several meeting, or a handful of meetings with Chuck, and-
Yeah.
He's just, he is an impressive guy.
Our past, our former Financial Director, led an effort to gather the requirements and all that kinda stuff. I think Ralph was part of that.
Yeah.
We oughta probably get that back on the table, have Adrian look at it, and some others, and then kinda go through it, make sure that, just dust it off, make sure that's everything we need to be in, and then we can make some decisions.
If you want us to demo it or whatever, again, we can-
Yeah, we'll reach out to Chuck and see if he can find some time in his calendar, he can come down and see it, hands-on.
Yeah, we'd appreciate it.
'Cause I think he'll be impressed.
Thank you, Bob.
And everybody.
Sounds good.
There we go.
So we need to read number 10 then?
The Department of Javon Family Services is requesting the board approve the recommendation on the executive director and adopt the revisions to amend the Javon Family Services Personnel Policy and Personnel Manual to be effective May 1st, 2018.
Second.
Question, Claypool?
Yes.
Question, Ryan?
Yes.
Have a good day.
Thank you, Kristen.
Good morning.
Morning. How are you? Getting it all figured out over there? How many times a day do you call Jerry? Not much anymore?
Jerry who?
Just some certain things that come up that we were in-
I just don't answer when she calls, right?
He doesn't.
Sink or swim.
I'll send an email, or I'll start texting you. So this is to execute the settlement agreement and generally, general release authorizing the release of all claims and payments of routine project monies with regard to the Russell Park wastewater treatment plant upgrades. And this is for the lawsuit that was between Jack Gibson Construction and Eclipse. We were brought into that settlement because we have, as part of our contract, we have withholding funds, so every payment that we do, we have funds that are withheld. So that amount, at the end of the project, gets released back to the contractor once we finalize the project and we confirm that all work was completed. So, um-
Is that case settled between those two?
It was, and we thought that we were going to get that settlement last week, so we had the check released, and it's in a hold check area right now in our office. So once we get that agreement from them that was finalized, then we can. So there was just work that Eclipse and Jack Gibson had between the two of them, and that's how we were brought into it. So we weren't able to release that money to Jack Gibson until this was finalized between those two.
I see.
And that's what that's like.
That's been a big project, that, I mean, long-
Yeah, the project's actually been done for about a year.
Yeah.
Which is with this lawsuit, we've just been holding the money until they can-
Yeah, and they finished the work, we didn't have any other, we have some maintenance items that were completed by them, but that's not what we would withhold that money for.
I see, yeah, it's separate, yeah. Okay.
Kathy, see that finalized?
Okay. Okay, sounds good.
Ms. Laura, I actually read the motion again, so if you want me to read it, read it, I can, otherwise-
So move. Second.
Question, Claypool?
Yeah.
Question, Ryan?
Yes.
Ralph, I'm gonna ask for a little flexibility here. Jessica, were you hanging out to make a comment?
Um, no, I was just hanging out till the end of the-
Yeah, thank you. The reason I bring that up is you and I talked to you a day ago. I didn't wanna take up your time here if you were hanging out. Remember the conversation we were having the other day?
Yes, we did have a conversation, but I was, I was just here for the rest of the agenda, though.
Okay, all right, sorry.
So-
Next two, I will cover, Kathy is occupied elsewhere today. These are simply, we work with Sedgwick for both our Workers' Compensation Administration and our Unemployment Compensation.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. So, and you see the amounts are not large, they really help us in both cases. You know, they're professionals, and, you know, workers' comp claim, they work with Kathy, So, and, and you see the amounts are not large, they really help us in both cases, you know, they, they're professionals and, you know, workers' complaint, they work with Kathy, unemployment claim, they work with Kathy. And they're the professionals that help guide us to get the best result we can get, and we've been using them for a number of years. I don't think this amount has really changed materially in a number of years as well.
It's the exact amount of last year.
Yeah.
Any question?
No. Yep.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and authorize a precedent on the Board to act the Workers' Compensation Service Ag, the Service Agency Agreement between County Management LLC, Sedgwick CMS Company and Jod County for workers' compensation services for the period of May first, two thousand and eighteen through April thirty, two thousand and nineteen, in the amount of ten thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the Unemployment Compensation Service Agency Agreement between Sedgwick Claims Management Services Incorporated and Jod County for unemployment services for the period of May first, two thousand and eighteen through April thirty, two thousand and nineteen, in the amount of one thousand two hundred and five dollars.
Second.
Can I shake that off?
Yep.
Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Leonard?
And this next one, uh, you guys approved a resolution, as we've said, you know, every year, I think it's in Ohio statute. Uh, the first full week of May is Public Service Recognition Week, so it's simply, um, calling out for recognition of employees, uh, working for the state of Ohio political subdivisions, you know, including county and township, whatever. And the, the amendment is based on, and we, we looked at how it was done last year, and, so, we, we all try to, all the departments try to do something to recognize their employees. And the small department, usually the manager's just spending out of their own pocket, you know, because we don't want to, we don't want a lot of public dollars going toward this, although the law allows for that. And apparently, what was done last year is in recognition, uh, in those departments where there's a lot of people there, it becomes a lot of money for one person to, to expect to take out of their wallet. You allowed last year, it was fifteen dollars, I think?
This is the exact same resolution as last year, that was amended.
Right.
We already did one, just like we did last year, and then they came back and they amended it to include the fifteen dollar per employee.
Because the question comes up, what, what if anything does the Commissioners want to allow to be spent on public money? That's a lot of fun in law, but you guys have to decide whether you allow any actual expenditures and what the limit would be. Last year was fifteen dollars, so.
Our policy doesn't allow under the O R C, it is in our policy manual, under the section of code, it does allow for public, public recognition. But, um, they did include language last year and they did it in the end of April, so include that.
Okay.
So, that's up to you, whether you want to take that into consideration for this year or not. Yes.
I don't know, what's your thoughts?
What are you looking at me for?
I'm only looking at you because we had the interesting conversation about this prior to, uh, coming in.
Our office is a little different than a lot of the other departments.
Yeah, in, in our case, we, we generally pay for this out of pocket, sorry, um, in this office. But this allows JFS and other larger departments, so the Craig Swenson doesn't have to fund his entire, uh, recognition lunch or whatever the case happens to be, so, um, I'm going to remain moved on this particular topic at this point, so, and we'll go along with the other Board members.
What did we do last year?
We did fifteen dollars.
You amended and, and actually went and allowed, the language actually reads, um, the Commissioners of Jod County wish to utilize this authority to recognize the employees of Jod County Government on an annual basis during the first week of May during Public Service Recognition Week. By means of modest expenditures on tokens of appreciation to those employees not to exceed fifteen dollars per employee and that such other expenditures may lawfully include providing of meals and non-alcoholic beverages as one means of expressing this appreciation. So, it's written in there as a way, so that they like decided to do lunch, it was, it was allowable under the section of.
Right, because the auditor needs, the auditor needs some decision, you know, for any money to be spent on this. They would, there'd have to be documentation and sign up.
I guess, did anyone utilize this last year that you know of, anybody? Yeah.
Just who did.
And, I mean, you have quite a few employees, right?
Yeah, I have thirty-seven.
So, what'd you do, throw a lunch or something?
So, we did not actually send out a survey and, and kind of ask, you know, about employee appreciation and, um, got mixed reviews, one would like a company picnic and the other, you know, any kind of appreciation award. Um, and we went for a little gift card per employee and they were really appreciative.
Okay.
And I'm, and unfortunately, I'm one of those folks where I just don't have an extra six or seven hundred dollars to do something for myself personally, so I was really appreciative that, you know, I, I didn't have to find that in my own bank account to appreciate my employees.
I mean, you, you might add to Dave, but it was a lesser amount when I first started.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then, um, when Tracy actually became a Commissioner, he stopped it with Bill completely.
Yeah.
And there was no allowance, um, for many years, um, up until last year when you guys decided to bring it back.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, it can be, it's, you know, there's no right or wrong answer.
We're not that bad, are we?
No, no, you're not. If you say no, we'll still like you, that's all right.
We have to lavish things, but, you know, that all came out of the employees' budgets, um, in our office, so.
I would, I would just, you know, assume, you know, moving forward the same as we did last year, I'm okay with that, as long as, I mean, I haven't heard any requests. You know, I haven't heard much one way or the other on it, that if, if it should be higher or lower or not do it at all, so.
Right.
All right. Go along with that.
So, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute resolution eighteen sixty-three proclaiming May sixth through May twelfth as Public Service Recognition Week, amending the previous reservation to include a set fee per employee in accordance with O R C three twenty-five, two two-five.
They specified fifteen in it?
Um, yes, in the last paragraph that I read, it does say, um, the fifteen dollars per employee.
So, move. Second.
Mr. Clickwell?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Leonard?
Right.
The next.
Are you covering the screen? Yes, please, are you? Here are the extreme stream, stream credits.
Um, yesterday after, um, mid-morning, uh, Dave Dietrich called me from the Planning Commission. Um, we had previously acknowledged a check from Hawthorne of Aurora, um, for additional earnings money for additional stream credits, which is allowable under the agreement, which gives them additional ninety days to receive the, um, requirements from the Army Corps of Engineers to complete their project, um, before they have to give you the full amount that they, um, purchased, um, that dollar amount. So, yesterday morning, he called, um, because Breezy Point and Tour de Cleveland are struggling with some paperwork with Army Corps of Engineers. And after Laura reviewing the agreement and talking to Dave and Jerry, Dave, um, we went back to them and said, no, you need to follow the provisions as set forth in the agreement, which means that they need to do the additional, um, second ten percent to hold that, because we're at that past two hundred and seventy-day mark. So, by giving this additional ten percent, that holds the stream credits for additional ninety days, giving them an additional ninety days to get all their paperwork and their permit in order with Army Corps of Engineers and O E M A. So, um, yesterday afternoon, he came back here at, um, quarter after four with the gentleman who handed me the two additional checks for the two remaining, um, because we're at that two-seventy mark. So, um, so today I'm just asking you to, um, acknowledge receipt of check zero zero five zero six eight in the amount of two thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars from Breezy Point Limited Partnership for additional ten percent deposit under section B of the agreement that was signed August first, two thousand and seventeen, for the purchase of two hundred and ninety-eight stream preservation credits. And this one is a little bit different, this is to acknowledge receipt of check one zero zero four in the amount of two thousand five hundred and twenty dollars from Robert John Benjamin. This is his personal check on behalf of Tour de Cleveland for that additional ten percent deposit under section B of the agreement that was signed August eighth, two thousand and seventeen, for the purchase of three hundred and thirty-six stream preservation credits. This language, um, went, I went back and forth with Laura, um, on the language and we specified, um, Mr. Benjamin's name with the check numbers to make sure that if there was any issues with the checks being coming back, that it was specific to him on behalf of the business.
So, do we have a motion then?
So.
Second.
Mr. Clickwell?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Leonard?
Right. Okay.
So, I only got it, then I, um, sent you an additional email yesterday, um, that had come in from Tom Reiner about the, um, Portage Jod Juvenile Detention Center that the trustees, the Joint Board of Trustees is meeting on May ninth, um, at four-thirty. And he sent out that notification, we need to actually schedule a joint board meeting here, the last one was held in Portage County, so this one is going to be held here. And he, um, said anytime after the sixteenth of May, um, because they will be, um, doing the budget at their meeting on the ninth, so then you guys have to do the budget part, um.
We try to block in for the twenty-second?
Sure.
Right after session?
After session?
Say ten-thirty?
I don't know if that is, um, I have to double-check when Portage meets, when they hold their meeting, so we may have to just move that time back a little bit.
Okay.
We'll shoot for the twenty-second then, is that good with you guys?
So, I'm here, you guys are both here for that?
Yes, no.
So, that we could get that now.
Awesome.
Okay. All right, I will shoot for the twenty-second and I will seal the panel.
Okay.
That's all we got.
Okay, and then, uh, we've got, um, Public Service Recognition Week, is this, uh, the sixth through the twelfth? Then we've got the Planning Commission in seven-thirty next week, um, and then we'll be back here again at nine-thirty, so, then that, I think that, uh, we're good if we have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.